Well, I have 7:31.
Yep.
So I would like to call this public hearing to order. Virtual via Zoom or via teleconference, Roxbury Zoning Commission, Monday, September 20th, 2021, 7:30 PM. The seating of members would be our regular members, Kim Tester, Vice Chairman, Elaine Curly, Bill Horgan, and myself, Jim Conway. My two alternates, Alan Johnson's a regular, he is not here. My two alternates are not here, I believe. So the four of us constitutes a quorum, so we can continue on with the four seated members, Kim Tester, Elaine Curly, Bill Horgan, and myself. Purpose of hearing, proposed amendments to zoning regulations on nonconformities, Section 3.10, 18.6, and definitions. I will go through the legal notices and the referrals and get that out of the way, and then I'll allow Kim to refresh everybody on the crux of this.
Wait, can I ask, seeing as this is my first time on a public meeting here in Roxbury, what would be the appropriate time to make a comment? I'm a neighbor to this property. So just if you can advise when I can just give my thoughts on that, I'd appreciate it.
Certainly, will do. We have our agenda here. We go through the purpose of the hearing, legal notices, referrals, and then item six on the agenda is public comment. Just a bit of a format to go through. Legal notices, it was Roxbury Planning Commission. And the dated August 30th, 2021. On August 12th, Roxbury Planning Commission reviewed a referral from the Roxbury Zoning Commission regarding proposed amendments to the Roxbury zoning regulations on nonconformity, Section 310, 18.6, and definitions. The members of the planning commission voiced concerns over the way the proposed tax amendments were presented, and to some of the language, the planning commission voted three to one that the proposal by the Roxbury Zoning Commission was compatible with the amended Roxbury Plan of Conservation and Development effective March 1, 2020. The planning commission wishes to thank the zoning commission for referring proposed amendments to us for review and comment. Northwest Hills Council of Governments, Jane Mueller. And I will go to their response.
Jim Conway speaking.
Excuse me, may I interrupt, Jim? I don't know if you're aware, but Candy joined us as well. I'm not sure if you want to add her.
Yes, we can definitely, I'm getting, going through pages here. Give me one second.
Thank you, Elaine. I didn't want to interrupt him.
No, that's all right. That's all right. Anyhow, back to the Connecticut Council of Governments. I want to see. Karen put all these wonderful yellow stickers, but they're not really in order. So I can deal with that.
Yeah.
Give me a minute.
I have it, Jim, if you want me to read it.
Yeah, the response from Jane, Northwest Hills Council of Governments. I don't have their response.
Oh, well. I have here staff recommendation, NVCOG staff finds.
First, Candy, I need to seat you.
Oh, sorry.
I would like to seat Candy Vilarie for Alan Johnson. Okay, and the second referral was Northwest Hills Council of Governments. And I was looking for the response.
Okay.
It's toward the end. I've just found.
You got it? Because very, Karen could have left a page off. It's very huge. Kim, if you have it, go ahead and read the response.
So I have NVCOG, Nagatuck Valley Council of Government staff.
No, Northwest Council of Governments.
Yeah, that's the one I have.
Yeah, I don't have the other one.
Yeah, neither do I.
I don't either.
So, yeah, that's the only, okay. Candy and I are in the same path here. I don't think the other one's in it.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
We did planning and which I think we're okay. Let's go to Western Connecticut Council of Governments. And what I'm really looking for is their comments. "The opinion of Western Connecticut Council of Government staff is the proposal is of local interest and with minimal intermunicipal impact. Therefore, it is not being forwarded to adjacent municipalities and regional staff is making no comments." And then it also went to Nagatuck Valley Council of Governments, same thing in its entirety. And the Nagatuck Valley Council of Government staff finds the proposed tax amendment not to be regionally significant and have no apparent intermunicipal impacts. Those are the agencies that we send all these referrals to, and it's just a course that we have to go through. The important one is Planning Commission, which they got it and responded, and then it was also sent out, which Karen didn't. We have an email list that we send this out within town, and everybody received it, and it's been noticed. Planning Commission, Northwest Hills, Western, and Nagatuck. So we're good there, no problem. Now.
Jim, this is Elaine. Did you review the response from Northwestern Hills? Or did you discuss the response from?
I haven't, no, I haven't seen it. But if anybody, if you guys got it, and maybe I didn't get it.
No, we don't have it.
We don't get it. We didn't get it.
Excuse me, it's Julie. The last I knew, they had not responded.
They had not responded.
They had not, so I still have not seen anything, nor have I been told anything different. So I don't know. If Karen had an email, it wasn't forwarded on to us after she left.
In the past, I accepted that as it was good to go. Most of them say that it doesn't have an impact, and if we didn't get a response and they were noticed, then it obviously didn't have an impact within the COG. So I really, I feel comfortable that we're okay with these. These are routine, very routine notices, so. So moving on, I would like to, before we go to public comment, which is next. Julie, scroll down. I didn't, give me the town clerk and the public notice registry. And there again. Okay. Town clerk was noticed and posted.
And voices.
And the voices, you know, that whole that whole segment Karen neglected. So let's do it without my packet and Peter Herblott, town clerk, dated August 3rd. See amendment. So there it is for everyone to see. I don't believe I can read that due to the fact that it's town clerk. To Peter Herblott, town clerk, from Roxbury Zoning Commission, proposed amendments to Roxbury zoning regulations dated August 3rd and revised August 12th. See amendment to Section 310.7.1 in red. On July 12th, 2021, the Roxbury Zoning Commission accepted for public accepted for public hearing a proposed rewrite of Roxbury zoning regulation regarding nonconformities. A public hearing on these proposed amendments to the Roxbury zoning regulations is scheduled for September 20th, 2021. For information on how to access this hearing, please refer to the town of Roxbury website at www.roxburyct.com. Section 3.10 of Roxbury zoning regulations is rescinded in entirety, and the following is substituted. In addition, Section 18.6 is deleted, Section 20.17 is amended, and Section 20.2 is added. I won't read the reg, but that was noticed to the town clerk. Or the record. Julie, can you give me the one from the voices?
No. Excuse me, Jim, the voices, legal notice was published on September 8th, and it covers almost the entire page of page 31.
Correct. I just wanted to get the date in there. This is to the voices from the Roxbury Zoning Commission, legal notice, date August 13th. Roxbury Zoning Commission will hold a virtual hearing on Monday, September 20th, 2021, 7:30 PM via Zoom teleconference. The purpose of this hearing is to solicit public comment on proposed amendments to Roxbury zoning regulations regarding Section 3.10 nonconformity. The proposed amendments to the Roxbury zoning regulations pertaining to nonconformity would rescind Section 3.10 in its entirety, and the following text would be substituted in addition to Section 18.6 would be deleted, Section 20.17 would be amended, and Section 20.2 would be added. And then it goes on to explain the entire regulation. And I think we've pretty much covered it. To get started on the actual public hearing and get some input, what I would like to do now for everyone that's with us is to allow Kim Tester, Vice Chairman, who worked with Gail McTaggart, and actually rewrote this thing to make it more up to date and legal in its entirety. It's not that confusing, and Kim will definitely explain the changes. So, Kim, go for it.
All right, thank you. Hi, Kim Tester here. Just for anyone who wants to look at what is existing with current regulation, you can go to roxburyct.com, go to Boards and Commissions, and then click on Zoning, and then the zoning regulations are there, and then you can look up 3.10, which is nonconformity. So the regulations that are proposed, the first five sections, 3.10.1 through 3.10.5 exist in the regulation now, and they're just moved to a new location. In all instances, through the document, through the document, the wording has had to be changed due to legal requirements by the state, and so we like to affectionately call that legalese, and in many instances, it had to be there. And so the regulation, what often happens when a regulation is up for revision, something comes before us, and we, there's a commission wonder why we don't allow it. And so this was one of those things where there were some concerns about people having barns and not be, nonconforming barns and not being able to expand them and utilize them in other ways. So that's where this came from. So the, as I stated, the first five items on this are existing and just reorganized into new location. We had already allowed nonconforming primary dwellings and nonconforming business commercial to expand 25%. And we decided to allow nonconforming barn buildings to fall into that as well. So in looking at a regulation, what often happens when there's going to be a change is that it's just a new section is just added on to the bottom. And so there's this long line of regulation, new regulations or regulation changes that happens over time. And so in looking at this, as I was reading it originally, thinking first we were just going to make a one paragraph change, realized that this needed an overhaul completely. So we combined, because we were looking to do the same with the nonconforming barns as we were with the other two that already, those regulations already existed. So we rewrote it so that the three, those three building types would be included together, and we can discuss them as one. So that's what the major reorganization was about. And so there are a couple of things that I just want to bring out, bring up that, and so this isn't a public forum. In the proposal, it's 3.10, 3.10.6.4, and it's the third line down. There is a typo in that, and it's referring to section, it says 4.10.6, and it should say 3.10.6. Okay, so if we can look at that, just so that everyone sees that. So it's, can you make that bigger, Julie?
Yes.
Okay, I need a magnifying glass. Yeah, one more if you can. Oh, that's perfect. So 3.10.6.4. Yeah, right there. So on the third line down, 3.10.6.4, it says, it should say 3.10.6 in the document on the third line. I just want you to be aware. Now, when I spoke to Gail, because Gail and I talked about this ahead of time, and she said that with a change like that, it's just considered a minor revision, and it does not impede the public hearing or anything to do with going forward on this in terms of discussion voting.
Kim, excuse me, there's one more correction.
Yes.
It's in 3.10.2.
3.10.2, yes.
It says, "Nonconforming uses, structures, etc. Lots shall be defined as set forth in Section 20.64." All of that should be 20.63, 20.63.1, and 20.63.2.
I'd have to check.
20.64 is nonprofit organization.
Oh. 20.6.2?
Yeah, it's 20.63, 20.63.1, and 20.63.2. That's what it states in the old reg, and that's, I think somebody just got carried away made for instead of a three.
Oh, so it should be 0.63, and not 0.64?
Yeah, yeah.
Should be, okay, all right.
Thank you. Good job, Candy.
So much, oh my gosh, that's awesome.
Yeah, otherwise, we're referring to nonprofit organizations.
And I will just double check to make sure this is just not a renumbering, because we had that discussion, that sort of discussion too, going forward, because we're getting rid of yeah, no, 18.6, okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay.
So the other thing that came up in the Planning Commission meeting that Jim and I, Jim Conway and I attended, someone had made a comment on 3.10.7. Go to 3.10.7.
3.7?
3.10.7.
Oh, okay, okay.
There you go. Okay, good. So the the three the 3.10.6, everything refers, also has to follow what's happening in 3.10.7. But what was confusing was that it didn't state in the beginning that this was all going to be by special permit. So what will, what this will say, because it says it at the bottom, but it doesn't say at the beginning, and it was a very good point. So what it will state is, and I'll read 3.10.7, "Where expansion of nonconforming buildings is allowed in these regulations, the following shall apply by special permit," so that people know right away that this, that that is the direction that they're heading. And that was an excellent comment made during the Planning Commission meeting.
And we're not changing anything, we're just moving it from the bottom to the forefront.
Exactly, exactly. And so I thought that was a very good comment. And really, the new part, you know, everything else is in there already, and then the new part is the one that discusses nonconforming barn building with this 3.10.6.2, 3.10.6.2. And then there are other supporting regulations that are in the 3.10.7 as well. I don't know if that's totally confusing to people, there's a lot of information, but I think it's important to note that we took what was existing, left most of it, some things we deleted, and then the barn, nonconforming barn addition is the, is the main thing. And the point was to open up the ability for people who had nonconforming barns to make changes to the structure.
Kim, sorry, one more correction?
Yeah, go right ahead. We're on it.
Okay, under 3.10.7.3, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 line down, so they're applying under 4.1.6. I think that should be 3.
Oh, again, right?
Again.
Yes, okay, yep.
Yep. Okay. And on, I guess, 3.10.10? Should it be 4.35? Or 3.? Yeah, it's probably 4.35.
Yeah. Yep. Yep.
Oh, cemetery? In 3.1.10?
I'm sorry.
It says absent competent evidence of intent of owner, sorry.
Sorry, can you say that slowly again? I missed.
In 3.10.10?
3.10.10.
Julie, if you'll go down?
Yep.
It says 4.3.5. Is that correct?
Yeah, I relied on Gail for some of this, so.
Okay, and it repeats it in 3.10.11, 4.3.5. When I look up in my regs, I don't know if they've been changed, but that's cemetery.
It is cemetery. I looked it up myself. I was trying to figure out what that meant.
Yeah. Was that right?
You have paper copy?
No.
I have the paper copy here.
Yeah, the paper copy is not.
I don't.
Yeah, the paper copy is not current, so let me just.
Not current, okay. All right.
I'm right, I'm right near, I've got the regulations right here.
Sure.
So online, so let me just make sure. It does, you're absolutely right, in the current one. Used by special permit. 4.3, I think it's just 4.3. Not just 3.4.3, just get rid of the 5.
Yeah, it said 4.5, because that narrows the cemetery, right?
Right, it's, that's, yeah.
Yeah, so we have to. What should it be?
4.3?
Oh, no, okay. 5. Because that's related to special permit.
Yeah, 4.3 period.
Yeah.
Yeah, not the 4.5 in addition to that.
I'm going to have to check with Gail, because 4.3 and 4.1.
All right.
One is Zone A and B, and the other is Zone C.
Oh, maybe they meant and 4.5.
You, do you see what I mean?
Yeah, it could have been just instead of adding an and 4.5, they left out the and 4 point. That, that very well could have been it.
But I will, yeah, I'm going to review all of that with her.
Yeah. Sorry, guys.
No.
No, that's, that's why we're here. Lot of numbers.
Oh, it was very long and a lot of numbers.
It was a lot of numbers.
I mean, it's a great job. You did fantastic job on rewriting all of this.
And it needed, it really needed to be done. We, we were a bit lax. My, my fault as well, as we applied some to nonconformities a year, two years ago, three years ago, and we never really read through what we're doing. And Kim went through this and found that there's a lot of things that needed to be changed. And, but the crux of it is.
Definitely clear.
Nonconforming, nonconforming barns. Anyway, okay, so, Kim. Anyway, okay, so, Kim. The numbering situation, you can touch base with Gail if you think you need to.
Yep, I will.
We're not changing any real meat here, we're just changing some referral numbers.
Right.
And to straighten things out, but anyway, I think we're still good to go to public comment at this point, and allow people to speak and ask questions and what they think.
And just so clear, I mean, with, Gail did say that when we were to find things like this, it was okay.
Right, yeah.
So that you're clear.
Right. Anyway, at this point, I would like to, item six on the agenda of the public hearing is public comment, and you folks can speak, but please identify yourself for the record, and let us know what you think.
Okay, this is Peter Valaris, if I may go first, I'm at 91 North Street. I purchased this property, moved in on May 14th this year. I understand some of the stuff that's being proposed here, based on what's available publicly. I'm very concerned about the property value that it'll have on my property, I'm adjoining properties to this, to what's being proposed here, and that's, that's pretty much it, I'll land it there, but I'm very concerned about what impact it'll have to my property, thank you.
Okay.
Kim, Bill. I was wondering, referring to Carter's property. It didn't sound like you were referring to Carter's property.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure what, what the concern is.
What was the property he was concerned about?
I don't know.
Mr.?
Shall be, or?
Oh, if he's on 91, he's further around the corner.
He's up on our street.
Yeah.
He's not adjoining Carter's.
Correct.
I don't think it has to do with that.
Exactly, this does not have anything to do with Carter property.
Yeah. Carter is in front of the chains. Is he still on?
I don't know.
Jim?
Yes.
Jim, this is Phil de Vries calling, what is this, what is the comment, public comment that you're referring to? Do this change in the regulations, is that what you're, you're asking about?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not about other things on the agenda tonight?
No.
Yeah.
Okay.
Prior, prior to this amendment, if someone in the town of Roxbury, the entire town of Roxbury, had a barn structure that was non-conforming in the front setback, you weren't allowed to do anything with it. You couldn't expand it, couldn't change its use, and simply put, we are allowing an expansion of 25% of the footprint, and you can change the use, not for living in it, no cooking, no sleeping, because that's a safety issue in a front setback. Just allowing people to be able to expand and change the intended use of that barn. Hopefully, that would enable them to save the barn and not tear it down.
Can I ask, Anne Coffin, can I ask her a quick question, when it's appropriate?
Sure, you're open.
So, just, I'm trying to understand the, not, so Anne Coffin, 3 Botchford Hill, adores X property, but just trying to understand the logic behind not allowing a bedroom or something in the front, I'm trying to understand from the set, what the logic is. You could read that again, like, you can't have a bedroom or living space in the front section of that barn, or whatever, the non-conforming barn, if it doesn't meet the setback. I'm just trying to think, because, you know, like, forget a barn for a second, houses in town, I mean, or New York City, for example, sit right on the corner, and there's no major issues, you, I'm just trying to understand why the setback is so far.
Well, to begin with, we're, the setback, front setback is 50 feet.
Yeah.
We inherited that.
Understood.
We're not changing anything, and so, 50 feet is a safe distance from the highway. And we don't, zoning's charge, we, we have to keep safety in mind. When we write a reg, the, one of the first things we have to look at is safety of this regulation. And some of these non-conforming structures are less than 10 feet from the road.
Right, because they're old, and that's how, you know, 50 foot setbacks back in the day, you were on the road because it's an old structure.
Right, so, we don't want somebody creating a bedroom 10 feet from the edge of the road from a safety standpoint.
If I may, one of the, this is Kim Tester, one of the things that our, the town attorney really was making very clear to us was that this was highly unusual, that our town is moving in this direction to allow anything to happen with non-conforming buildings at all. There are many, many towns that don't allow any expansion or any change to them, but we have been, I think, pretty progressive about allowing these changes to take place, so that's what she stated, and I was kind of surprised that the things were as tight as they were in other locations, so.
Yeah, I didn't mean to be, I didn't mean to be argumentative, I was just trying to understand, it just seemed, you know, as you're trying to repair a building, and I feel like in my case, if I was using that space, if I was going to go there, it wasn't impact, because I have the distance, so to speak, and I could, but I was just trying to think, for some people who have a barn who's sitting somewhere and they want to convert it, most of those barns are sitting right on the, as you know, the street side, and I was thinking, gosh, you know, so many homes are that way to start with, and I was just trying to understand it, but I get where you're going, it's existing, so you answered my question, thank you.
Yeah, the homes are existing, and also, keep in mind, we've changed the regulation on the conforming portion. And in fact, in your situation, if a barn is perpendicular to the road, your barn is 100 feet long, but only 20 feet of it is non-conforming. The other 80 feet, you can do, we allow you to do more with the conforming portion. The portion that you can't do much with is the portion that is non-conforming.
Okay, understood, thank you, explaining, I just, I just needed to wrap my head around that, thank you.
Good, okay, who's up?
This is Elaine, and in 3.10.7.1, I don't have any questions about the first statement. May not exceed the pre-existing height, ridge line is in parentheses. Can you tell me why we need to use the word ridge line? Because we don't have any regs for that.
Well, we use ridge line because we don't want to create more of a non-conformity going vertical. The building is already non-conforming, the ridge line is 25 feet, but the building's within 50 foot of the setback. So, we're allowing you to add to the non-conformity going horizontally back and not vertically up. So, we use ridge line as a template guideline. The existing ridge line that's there, you can't go higher than that.
Okay, yeah, I, I got existing height, but I didn't know why we added the word ridge line, because that confused me.
Well, Kim can help you.
Yeah, that, that actually, we wanted, we added to make it more clear, because some people in construction speak to it as a ridge, as a ridge line.
Okay, thank you.
This is Wendy Walker here, may I speak?
Certainly.
Well, as a, of course, I'm with the HDC, and we've been fighting for barns for a long time, and I think I can generally speak for most in saying that we are really happy that we have a partner in trying to save some of these old barns. It's been, for me personally, a little hard for the legalese to try to figure out what exactly it all means, except for the fact that now, if I'm right, non-conforming barns have a way to change and expand, would that be a correct summary of what we've changed?
Yes, Kim, go ahead.
That's okay, yes, we'd be able to expand the footprint away from non-conformity by 25%. So, that should be helpful to people, that's what we're hoping.
And also, change the use.
Yes.
Yes.
It doesn't have to be just agriculture anymore.
No, no.
Okay, so those are the two big changes in non-conforming barns, which I would say we applaud you very much in doing that, because it's so hard to find a use for a lot of old barns. And it's all by baby steps to, to find that. As a private citizen, I would also like to bring up a concern that Anne had, that with so little housing in Roxbury, it, it might be another day or another time where we could expand it to find a way for people to live in some of these barns, because I find that's the biggest problem, is nobody has a use for them, but yet, here they are, structurally could be converted to places to live, so.
We, we agree with you 100%, Wendy, and if you have a barn that, a portion of that barn is outside of 50 feet, you can live in it. We're only talking about the portion of the barn that's within the 50-foot front setback.
And what about the side setback?
Okay, we addressed corner lots, and when Kim addressed that, on a corner lot, we don't allow you to go horizontal, we only allow you to go up 25%. So, we don't create an impact, making a non-conforming structure larger on a corner lot. We've had, we researched some corner lots in Roxbury, and one way or the other, obviously, you're going to expand within the 50-foot of one road or the other, and we don't want to allow expansion in the 50-foot setback of a road. It's got to go back, so on a corner lot, it goes up.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that, and thank you for making all this effort to, to change this, it would have driven me crazy with all those numbers, so, thank you very much.
This, this is Elaine Curly again, and I'd just like to kind of clarify, 3.10.7.3, up to 25% per lot. So, but it seems to me, when I read it, Kim, what, what this is saying is, I could add, okay, a porch on my house and use 10% of that 25%, and then I could come back to you and use 15% on an outbuilding, is that what this is saying?
No.
Not a separate building, not a separate building, but you get 25% of your footprint. You can do it all at once, you can do it twice, or you can do it three times, but 25% of knockouts.
Right, are you saying, Jim, the structure footprint, like, so, if you have four buildings on your property, it's 25% per building, is that what you're saying?
No, 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 the, the structure, the structure itself.
People have to ask, say their name and only speak one at a time, because it's recorded, so, which is just important, so, if you can do one at a time, that would be great.
But 25% of the structure that you're adding on to, and you can do it all at once, or you can do it in piecemeal, it'll be recorded within the town clerk's office that you added on 12%, 12 and a half percent, and you come back five years later and do another 12 and a half percent.
Only on that one same building?
Oh, yes, yeah.
But, but my, my question is, if I had two buildings that I wanted to expand?
Correct.
They would take 25% each?
Yes.
Or total, okay, thank you very much.
25% each, if you have two non-conforming due to front setback, like your house and your barn, both of those can be expanded by 25% of the footprint, going away from the non-conformity.
That, the sentence that says may be utilized only once per building lot is confusing to me.
Oh, that's specific to 3.10.6.
Once per building lot.
As qualified for, as qualified by section 3.10.7, do not apply to accessory buildings, okay, thank you. For the next mention, okay. 3.6.
So, under 3.10.6, you can, you have 3.10.1, 2, and 3, right, all underneath that one.
Anyone else like to comment or question? There's a lot here to digest, so a lot of it's just been moved around, but the bottom line is, we're trying to allow people that have non-conforming barns to do a little something with them.
It's Anne Coffin again, identifying myself, sorry, I appreciate it, and appreciate, and thank you, Kim, for doing your legalese, or breaking it down to layman's terms. The one other question I just wanted to review, and thank you, I just, like I said, I read it, and I say, similar to Wendy, you know, reading this. Just the last section where you're talking, I think it's, I feel like it's the abandonment section, can you touch a little bit of that, put that in layman's terms for us? If possible, I don't know if that's a change or not, but it's a 20.2 down kind of towards the end. Can you just layman terms that for me, because you're saying like you have a year, if something happens to the structure to rebuild, or what's changing there?
Oh, I see, that's, the 20.2 is a, the addition is just abandonment, or to abandon, it's a definition. I think you're referring to, you're referring to the destroyed by fire explosion or act of God, the 3.10.11?
I think so, I was reading that, and then I was just trying to, I just needed like a layman's terms of that, I think I got that, but then it was like when I was reading the 20.2, I was like, so what are you saying there, I just, I needed like plain people's speak.
I think, the way I look at it, Anne, is if you have a non-conforming barn structure, and it falls down, you've got a year to put it back on that location, even though it's still non-conforming. And if, I believe, layman's terms, if you wait longer than a year, And if, I believe, layman's terms, if you wait longer than a year, you've abandoned that and you can't rebuild a nonconforming structure. If you have a nonconforming structure, we're giving you the right to put it back up within a year. If it comes down due to snow, winds, fire, you can put it back up within a year.
So, sorry, I'm going to say it's the, what we changed, it was a year and it's legally, it wasn't illegal. It was not legal to only give people a year because COVID made changes to that in particular. So they changed it. So it's two years.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Thank you.
3.11 is the one where we altered it. You have to start rebuilding within a year. But then the complete few years and it'd be prior to that, it just stayed at a year.
Right, okay.
So.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? We got more stuff to work with tonight. Does anyone else have any comments or questions or opinions in our public hearing? Well, I thank everyone for their participation and it really helps, helps us out clarifying. And everybody reads things a little different than we do and public hearings are very important to help us through this and get it right. With that being said, chairman does not make motions, but I can ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
This is Kim Tester. I motioned to close the public hearing for nonconformity.
This is Elaine Curly, I second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
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 Thank you. That's it, folks. We will discuss this later. Thank you.
Thanks, nice to have you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kim. Well done. There's a lot, there's a lot there and I think it's a step in the right direction. Okay, now, I would like to call to order our special meeting of the Roxbury zoning commission via Zoom or teleconference, Monday, September 20th, 2021. The time is 8:24. Seating of members. I will seat Kim Tester, Elaine Curly, Bill Horgan, myself, Jim Conway, and I will seat Candy Falari for Alan Johnson. And always as in the past, if there is any conflict with our agenda for the seated members, please state your conflict if you need to
Accuse.
Recuse yourself due to conflict. If not, we'll move forward. And the other thing I want to mention, this is a special meeting due to the, we changed the date and nothing can be added to this agenda at a special meeting. So we've seated our members. We don't have anyone for public comment. We need to approve the minutes of our regular meeting, August 9th, which you've all got. And if there's any changes or amendments, corrections.
I didn't, I didn't see anything, but.
No, I went through them. I'm good with them.
Yeah, I didn't see anything either, so.
All right. There again, if I could get a motion to approve the minutes of the August meeting.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I have a motion to approve the regular meeting of August, the minutes of the regular meeting, August 9th, 2021.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
This is Candy Valeri, I second.
Great, all in favor? Aye.
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 Minutes, good. Okay, we have an application from Dennis McDonald, Sixth Baker Road zoning application, which you've all received. It's a different application than what we've had in the past, somewhat different. Addition to the existing house within the addition, one-bedroom apartment as well as, I believe it's a roof over the existing deck that faces the east, east covered deck. That was, we saw that before, we saw the addition before. This is to go forward with the addition with 1,152 square foot apartment, I believe. I'm just, I read it last week, but one bedroom, one bathroom apartment over the addition. And we have that application before us. And if you folks have questions, I believe Dennis is with us. If not, I'm sure we can try to, the application is pretty complete, it's very complete.
I don't, I don't see, I don't see him near.
When do we, this is Bill, when do we act on this application?
Tonight.
Tonight.
Tonight. I have some things I'd like to say about it.
Okay, sure.
My thoughts together here, the the application came with a bunch of supporting documentation submitted with the application. Among other things, this documentation is, as we know, confusing, fragmented out of sequence, irrelevant, and barely verbatim. And or but, most of these things is not in our jurisdiction. So it's a confusing, I will always be confused, I've tried to make sense of it. There's a lot of conflict in it, but building plans, that's not our business. Our business with this application is what's in the little green book, little green book. I have a green book, you might be read, this is, these are the zoning regulations. And the very first section is only, in the very, very first section of zoning regulations, the very first section addresses the role character Roxbury, followed throughout by many ways to protect property values, especially neighbors. Section 7, I've tried to, I know it backwards and forwards, I dream about it. I voted this down the last time because of section 7 and I was, I thought I'd voted wrong because section 7 deals with site plan. Well, second, a site plan is a very all-encompassing section. And in-site plan, it's all encompassing because it relates to any permitted use or special permit. Section 7 site plan is, like I said, is all encompassing. And in section 7, buildings, the word building, buildings is specified three times. So I'm assuming, assuming that the authors of section 7 placed an importance on the word buildings. So what I'm going to do rather than get carried away, I'm just going to read section, not all of it, section 7 that relates to to my thoughts and my concerns.
But Bill, um, Bill.
Yes.
He doesn't have to abide or comply with section 7.
Why?
This is a right of use, an addition on your house in an apartment in the addition. Everybody can do it. Section 7 requires parking, pavement, all kinds of stuff.
It does, but there are things in section 7 that relate to to buildings.
Correct, but by special permit, and this isn't by special permit.
Oh, special permission or any permitted use. It says right here, it's the very first sentence in the site plan section.
Any permitted use.
Any permitted use or special permit.
Well, if we're referring to section 7, we're not requiring him to comply to section 7.
Well, section 7 is in our green book, it's our regulations. And our jurisdiction is to address respect and honor and make sure that the regulations are met. So section 7, as we start reading through it, definitely pertains to buildings.
Correct. So do you think, are you saying that he should apply for section 7 site plan development?
I think so. I'll read you the.
But I don't know if we require that to put a simple addition on.
Well, it's a, the permits needed for it, not a special, not a special permit, just it's a permitted use and it has to comply with our regulations.
Because I'm, I spoke with Gail on this like four months ago. And Gail's question is, is this a site plan application or right of use application?
Well, if it's a right of use application, it still needs a permit and it's still, is addressed a number of times in section 7. I'll read it to you happily and.
Oh, I read section 7 numerous times. I just don't know if it applies to this application.
Well, let me read it for the record. The parts of section 7 I think are important. As I say, section 7 is all encompassing, any permitted use or special permit. As we go down the list, section 733 talks about the protection of environmental quality and the preservation and enhancement of property values. Not this property, but property values, inferring property values around it. And we'll get down to section 733 point, no, 734 states a high quality of building design, neighborhood appearance. At least the following aspects of the site plan should be evaluated to determine the conformity of the site plan to this standard, standard of a high-quality building. Section A of that is a design in harmony with existing and/or proposed neighborhood appearance as shown by the exterior appearance of the buildings. And those are the three sections that refer to buildings. Then we also have a paragraph C that says it addresses scenic views both from the site and or onto over the site. Now, getting back to section 7 and property values, I think that the building is very large, very abnormally large. And I think that this building, if built, will affect adjoining property values. I see Phil DeBree sitting here. I know that Diana and Phil DeBree will visibly overlook, will look down. It's almost eight, eight months a year. Will this affect their property value? I think it will. That's my opinion. Bob and Francine Fish, Edso Farm, will look at this every time they drive up to the house. It will affect their values. Peter, I don't know what his last name is, Larrabee, who bought, Peter who bought Larrabee's house on Norris Street will be right next to it. Also, this is a major entrance and exit to Roxbury. Everyone sees this. This is a, I've heard many comments about this building. I have my own opinion, but I live over a mile away. So whatever happens here doesn't affect the value, my value. But I do drive by it often and always and wonder why anyone would need such storage as the red, I call it the red building with balconies, and now needs double the amount of storage? Even if the future plans include accessory use, accessory use is limited to 1,800 feet, 40% of the main residence. Why all the space now? I have these opinions, these are my opinions, but my vote on this will be based solely on literal and verbatim interpretation of the regs, meaning section 7. So I see Phil sitting here, I wish, I wish.
I want to jump in on this, Jim. This is Phil DeBree.
Back up a bit, back up. This portion of the meeting is for the five seated members. This is not a public hearing. Sorry, Phil, we can't allow someone from the public to speak. This is zoning commission business only, only the five seated members can speak. Not if I had unseated alternates, they couldn't partake. We have a application before us and it's the five of us that need to discuss it. Respectfully, sorry, you can't speak.
Could I ask a question of you, Jim?
Not during our meeting, but you can definitely call me anytime. Right now, this is just the five of us.
When, when can the public comment on this before you make a motion to accept or deny it?
We have a section on our agenda called public comment that you come in prior to our meeting and you have a application and you state what you want to discuss. And actually, you can't discuss anything on the agenda. You can discuss things that we have previously or looking into the future. The whole purpose of a zoning commission meeting is for the five of us to work through these applications. This is not a public hearing, but you can always, you can always apply to go to public comment next month and and speak and ask questions or but during this meeting right now, we're discussing an application from for Sixth Baker Road and it's just up to the five of us.
Jim, Bill, I just had a comment though.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
What's that?
Sorry, go ahead.
I just wondered why public comment was on the agenda here and we didn't have any public comment when we could have had some.
Public comment has been on the agenda for about 12 years. When I first took over as chairman, we included public comment. There was none prior to that. At the time we included it, you had to go to the zoning office and Karen and you say, I want to be on next month's meeting and these are the questions I have.
Okay.
And it can't pertain to a commission member and it can't pertain to anything on our agenda. It's a very.
Jim, I remember a few months ago, or maybe you're going Dudley and nobody were here about their barns and we invited them to speak.
They had an application before us.
Thank you. Okay.
They were applying. They had an application. They wanted to build a, actually a round barn for a restaurant and have events and they had the application, so obviously they could speak.
Okay, so Phil could put an application to speak next meeting then?
He doesn't have to do an application. It's not an application for a zoning permit. It's just a forum that Karen has to state what you want to, you want to discuss with us. And we don't want people coming in and talking about agenda items. The items on the agenda just for the seated members and occasionally alternate member if we're talking about a reg change and just kicking the dirt around. But our agendas, it's just up to us. Anyhow, we're back to an application from Dennis McDonald for an addition. And within the addition, 1,100 square foot apartment. And within the addition, uh, eleven hundred square foot apartment. The addition's been approved by wetlands. Which that really, we can approve anything that pertains to zoning. And as long as uh, like Bill said, everything uh he complies with all our zoning requirements. We have to either, we don't, this is, we don't get these very often. They're generally handled downstairs in town hall. But this one, they didn't wanna handle. They gave it to us, so it's up to us, the five of us to uh, approve or deny. And if we deny, you gotta have a specific reference to our regs as to why you're denying.
So Jim, as well, we can discuss this application now.
Certainly.
Uh, I'm looking at the main home accessory apartment, grade level, main home accessory apartment. Uh, I see on the page here main home accessory apartment, eleven point five, eleven hundred fifty-two feet, I suspect. Has living area, closet, closet, bedroom, bathroom, then another page has, looks like the same footprint. Has accessory garage and uh existing home. Is the existing home, the main home, I don't. Again, I'm confused, I'm honestly truly confused about this. Uh.
Well, what I've seen, there's a house standing there.
Yeah, it's off to the right, existing.
A house, there's a house.
Yep.
Okay, he wants to, if I understand it right, he's gonna add on to the house. He's putting an addition on the house.
So the addition is gonna become the main home then?
Oh, yes. No, it's part of the main home. It's an addition to the existing house.
Okay, it doesn't say that on this, this page.
Well, the picture shows the addition, existing house and the yellow portion is attached to it.
Yeah.
Jim, now, this is Candy. I'm, now I'm
So if I may, this is Kim. If you look at the um, the basic, the uh, the one that Bill's referring to, it says main home accessory apartment grade level. The, the drawing that he did and um and this says north and then it's, it says existing home, which is all the way to the right. And then the next thing is the two car main home garage. So he's saying that that's the garage for the the primary residence. That's what he means by that. And it's not two car, then main home, then garage is separate. Those are one, one sentence.
Does anyone understand, does Bill, does anyone understand why I'm?
Yeah, it's Candy, it's still, I'm sorry, Bill.
Go ahead.
Yeah, it's still confusing.
Uh, the way I look at it, he's put an addition on the existing house.
Yeah.
The grade level of the addition is a garage for the existing house and a garage for the apartment. And the apartment is going on the second floor of the addition.
Right.
Along with some storage. The part that I see is it's an addition to the primary residence. Within the addition on the second story, he's putting an apartment. Downstairs is garage.
Right.
I see a lot of, this is Bill, I see a lot of I see, you see, we're kinda trying to uh, read his mind and I, first of all, I, I, I have a question. I don't know, can you have an ex, can you have a habitable space in a pole barn?
Sure.
Okay.
You put a little, obviously pole barn construction, I, I mean, you're, you're a builder, you know, you can heat it, insulate it and make it habitable.
Yeah, I've never done it.
One thing, this is um, this is Elaine Curly and one thing I'd like to say, um uh, the consistency here is the inconsistency. The names, the wording continues to be kind of smeared around a bit. The language is very confusing. Um, the title is main home accessory apartment grade level. But there is no label on accessory apartment. There's an accessory garage. There's an existing home and then the next thing to the left says main home. Um, it doesn't, it's not titled garage to the main home. The accessory garage doesn't say accessory apartment with garage below. I mean, there is a way to word this to prevent confusion.
I think if we looked at the another, next page and you're, you're seeing the ground level and upstairs, there's a there's a picture of the apartment.
Is it the other way or no?
It could be the other way, Julie. Okay, right there.
Wait.
Elaine.
Yeah.
That? Bedroom, closet, closet, bathroom, living area. West garage below, house garage below. I mean, I'm not confused.
I don't see, you're, oh, you're talking, okay. Main home and accessory apartment. I know, I, maybe I do have that. I, I mean, there's so many. There were like seven pieces of paper that went with this, I think.
Yeah, ten, I think there were ten.
That's what it takes for an application. Normally, we don't see these, but that's when an application for this type of thing is.
So which, what is this title, Julie? Six Baker survey, east side? Zoning apartment? Okay.
There is no title.
And it was sent, okay, it was sent side, all of these were sent sideways too.
Yeah.
Um, so if you're on a laptop, you're basically only getting a bit at a time. Okay, so is the the house with the garage below, you're saying is an expansion of the home? Is that what you're saying?
He's putting an addition to the existing house.
Yep.
Okay, the lower grade level of the addition is garage space for the main house, garage space for the apartment. The apartment is on the second floor of the addition.
So the existing home becomes twenty-nine hundred square feet versus current eleven hundred fifty-two square feet?
The eleven hundred and fifty-two, I believe, is the apartment. With the addition.
Well, this says, this says main home eleven fifty-two. Right at the top.
Yeah, I saw, that's in front of me. And then underneath it says accessory apartment. The accessory apartment, if he put a comma between main home and eleven hundred fifty-two accessory apartment.
The application um outlines it as well. The eleven fifty-two fits in the forty percent of the main home square footage.
Right.
Uh, that's the apartment, as I understand it. Can we go down a couple of pages? There was another map that they submitted. Sorry, this is Candy. Can we go down a, a couple of pages? They had a, a color rendering or whatever.
Right, yeah.
Showed the, the uh, the plot, plan or whatever you wanna call it.
Yeah, with all that.
Yeah, that, that, that should help a little more.
I reviewed that already.
Yeah, down a little more. I, I think it's another couple of pages down. There, that one. Okay. Yeah, so this has a proposed forty by sixty accessory building, is that's?
That's there.
No, that's.
Already, okay, that's already there.
That's been there for years.
Yeah, okay, I see. Um, so the new pole barn is the one we're talking about, which is
yellow.
The yellow. Okay. And a covered deck, apparently.
Yes.
Orange, yeah, okay. All right. Yeah, um, when I first read this, I, I, I kind of agree with Bill and Elaine. It was rather confusing. You have to go through it and, and read it. And the last time we, we looked at this, it was so confusing. It was unbelievable. This now makes a little more sense. Um.
This is a totally different, different than the last time because the accessory building.
It's a little clearer, it is clearer.
It's changed.
But I do understand it now.
Uh, this is Kim. So the last time, the last application had an accessory apartment over the green accessory building and that's no longer part of the application. It's only the new building in yellow and the apartment orange.
But what's confusing is here's titled pole barn. In the application itself, it's, it's titled garage or something. So I mean, the names changed.
It, pole barn describes the type of construction.
Ah.
Pole barn type of construction. You can have stick framing, you can have whatever, Bill Moes, he's a builder. This is a pole barn type of construction. I know, I understand, Candy, it's okay.
Okay, no, that's fine. I, you know, it makes more sense now.
Within the pole barn, he's putting in an apartment and he's putting garages and he's got storage. It's an addition to an existing house.
Right. No, I understand.
Okay.
I now understand.
Yeah.
The, the thing is that, correct me if I'm wrong. But we don't, we don't have an elevation of the pole barn connecting the house and the house is already set at a very high elevation.
I believe we do have elevations. Julie, if you can scroll a bit, we had a front elevation right there.
Yes.
Existing house, okay, existing house is to your right.
What I'm saying is you don't see the existing house in the elevation. You don't see, you don't see it continuing. Yep, he's showing, he's showing the, just the fragment there. And, and the total length of this, the total length of this from the patio to the accessory garage that exists.
Patio.
Well, yeah, because he's, he's adding a patio on the very right on the north.
The other side of the house, Elaine. The patio is going to the other side of the house.
Yep.
This is Kim. She's just asking what the total length is of the whole project.
Exactly.
Well, she said connected to the patio.
But, but she's a- asking what the total length is from the patio to the other, to the new barn, end to end. What's the length?
I guess you gotta do the math. Twenty-four.
I'm not sure we need an elevation as a zoning commission.
No, I don't think so. No.
I, I, we don't, we don't need building plans. I thought.
Forty-eight and thirty-six.
This is Bill. I thought being the replacement for the Z E O, we needed a set of plans as a Z E O would have accepted, which would be the same plans as a building inspector. But the Z E O doesn't need the same plans. It just, he usually gets them, but he doesn't need those, so.
Correct.
I think we need elevations. Maybe we need to see the height. Maybe because that's a zoning issue, height and footprint, those are zoning issues. Uh, sanitary, wetlands, those aren't zoning issues. Uh, so I don't think we need proper elevation.
No, I, I, I didn't say we need it. I would have liked to have seen it to understand this a little bit better.
I agree. I understand that. This is Bill. I understand that, but it's not something we need uh, to support our temporary or appointed jurisdiction on this. I think that uh, I still have burning in me a very big concern about, and I think we should. I tried to get a message to Gail to find out the significance of the relationship of section seven to the exterior appearance and the adjoining, the impact on adjoining property, uh, property values. Uh, this will be, let's face it, this will be a very big thing, all right? I'm not a beauty contest judge, you know, it's, it's abnormally big to me, but you know, that might not be in my business. Uh, but I do think we need to find out from Gail if those things that I mentioned, very obviously building, mentioned three times in section seven. I think we should find out if it relates to this application. Phil the Breeze, obviously he's concerned. He's gonna look right down on this. I can't speak for him and feel for him, but there are a lot of people who'll be impacted by the looks of this thing. It's gonna look big. Abnormal. I mean, you can't argue that. So I think for our sake, we should definitely get Gail to talk to us about this, rather than hear it secondhand and thirdhand. I, I need to know if what I read and how I read the English language on section seven, I need to know if it's if it's uh insignificant. I don't think it is because those words were put in that by the authors who wrote that thing for some reason. So I'd be happy to, you know, if, if Gail said, hey, this is all legal, well, you know, I have to vote for it. But right now, there's a big question in my mind and it's relative to property values, the surrounding neighborhood.
Well, I can say, Bill, that Gail has been aware of this. This has been in front of us since last February.
I know.
Gail has seen it.
She hasn't.
Gail asked me if uh the application is right of use or site plan.
I'd like her to review section seven and specifically to the.
I believe um, site plan would be for somebody coming in that hasn't put anything up yet. And this application's for an addition to an existing house.
Yeah, but there isn't anything where this suggests right now, so it's something new. It's not a renovation or remodeling. It's a it's a major change to the, to the profile, to the structure, to the site. I don't think it would hurt to, to really get a, an ironclad opinion from her.
Well, what we have to do tonight, what's before us is um we either approve this application or deny the application. We have two, two avenues.
Can we deny it? Can we put off for a week or a month?
You, it's before us. We've accepted it. I do believe we have sixty-five days to act upon it.
Our next meeting's only three weeks away.
Uh, this is a special meeting. If we deny, we have to be specific as to why we're denying. It's gotta be.
Put it in the sixty-five day above.
I do believe um, this meeting is uh changed. It's a special meeting. I do believe that you have just taken a shot at it sixty-five days from the time of receipt or the meeting. So um.
I think that's right.
Yeah, it's sixty, sixty-five days.
So that's a long time from now.
Everything we receive, we have sixty-five days. But we, there again. um, this is our first. My first in twenty-three years of zoning to where we've had to approve this. This is a right of use. It's in the regs to allow somebody to put an addition on the house.
But the addition has to be a certain height. And it has to conform to the regulations. And section seven is in our regulations. We just don't know if it's specific enough to apply to this. None of us can answer that right now.
Well, I can, I can just say, I don't think section seven applies to this application.
Yeah, and I can say, I think it does, so.
Okay, that's fine. But for the record, I don't believe this application before us requires section seven compliance.
So we could vote on it now.
I, this is Kim. Um. I think that if we can uh, use the sixty-five day window, only go till next month. It's only three weeks as I, I think it's actually maybe a little longer, uh, because it's October because of, no, it's only one day later. Um. Then we can just make sure that the commission feels that, you know, Gail's response to that is clear and hearing from her, that that would be my recommendation.
I do believe we do have sixty-five days.
Yeah.
On any application before us.
Because I know she's away, and that's she was gonna try and be here tonight, but I know she's away and she wasn't able to to chime in just for the public hearing, so if she were here, she'd be able to answer it now, but.
It would be nice if she answered all of us rather than, you know, she just answered the meeting. We really all need to be, you know, we're commissioned together. We really would like to
Yeah.
get the right answer from her.
We can pay Gail to come to our meetings.
That'd be great.
It's pricey, but we can do that.
Um, Paige.
I'll be here. She'll be to master this.
This is Kim again. I think, um, I think because we've had this in front of us in so many different versions that and it's been put to us because of whatever complicated issues are before the Z E O that it might be to our benefit to have her respond to it.
Well, it's, uh, like I said, I'm just the chairman. It's up to the commission. Um. Personally, I think it's an application of right of use. We, it's big, but we don't say in section seven, Bill, I, all respect, uh, doesn't apply here.
Well. Seven point two says decision time limit. A decision by the commission on a site plan shall be rendered within sixty-five days after receipt of such a site plan. Um, do you feel that that applies, Jim?
This isn't, this isn't a site plan. This, we're not approving the site plan.
No.
We're approving an addition to the existing house with an apartment in it.
Right.
We're not approving a site plan.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
There's your wife on it.
So may I, may I, I'm a little bit confused. So if somebody helps me with memory. Mr. McDonald came before us two months ago. We deny, did we deny accepting the application at that time because it was too confusing? Is that correct?
His application was totally different. Um.
Okay.
It encompassed the forty by sixty accessory building. And it was all different. Some were confused, some were not confused. Um. There was, uh, other issues involved in that. That is not before us this evening. Um, before us is a pared down version. Um, there was three different things in his original one that started last March, April, May, and June. And this, now we got down to the two, the patio and the pole barn.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to um, be clear that we're starting from, this is the first time this is presented to us this evening.
Correct. Yes, yes, this is new.
Hi. It's Candy Elaine. In answer to your question, it looked like that. Fine. Uh, the pole barn is eighty feet long. It's twenty-four, twenty-four and thirty-two.
Yeah, I got, I got eighty-six, so, yeah.
Oh, eighty-six. I thought it was twenty-four, twenty-four and thirty-two. Forty-eight and thirty-two is eighty.
Yeah. It comes to over a hundred and uh, twenty-eight feet when it's finished, I think, is what I summarized in in my head.
Hmm.
But.
What is the, what is the significance of that, Elaine?
Well, I I was just curious about the scale on the lot. This is one of those situations where I really wish that we had covered impervious surfaces.
Yeah, I think it way, it's way within the limits of the, the, the coverage of a lot is huge. So this, as big as this building is, I don't think it even comes close
Okay.
limitations of coverage.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't think that's an issue at all.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so what's the consensus? You want to, um, get more information from Gail on Bill's concerns with section seven? Or we got two ways to go here. We can approve the application or we can wait sixty-five days. I do believe we have sixty-five days to answer uh, concerns. And I have no problem with everybody being uh, brought up to speed and and answer their concerns.
This is Elaine Curly, and I do like the idea of having an opportunity to consult with Gail and clarify um, a few questions for myself.
And get, uh, Elaine, what are those questions?
Um, well, again, what Bill brings up is um, seven, where we're supposed to be responsible for the comfort um, and the protection of residents. And therefore, how does this affect values? When, when you're talking about such a long range sight line. So you're coming from, you're coming around that bend on sixty-seven. And you're gonna see, uh, this, this um, expanse. How is that affected? How does that affect basically an entry into Roxbury? Also, the curve coming up um, the hill. Um. You know, my car broke down there and I was in, you know, completely frightened for safety. Um, I know it starts to open up there, but what we're talking about basically is a lot of vehicular activity now. Um, so those are all things that I'd like to consider.
So you're you're concerned with an increase in traffic?
Yep. Why wouldn't I be? I mean, every single day now we're faced with another accident.
And what's, what's adding to the, your concern? What's adding to the increase?
Well, there's expanded use on the lot now.
The apartment.
Yeah.
If if I may, when I was speaking with Gail, which I spent many hours as we went through this, she expressed an interest in coming before the board or the commission to help the commission understand the role of the zoning actions and the commission as as a whole. And, um, because we have, you know, new, you know, newer members and, you know.
Yep.
As we go along. And, um, you know, we thought that that sounded like a great idea, so it might be an opportunity for her to kind of wrap that in with this discussion. You know, at that same time, so we can.
I've actually personally taken that course, um, three times now.
Yeah.
What's legally required, uh, you know, of us. And, uh, there's, there's still a few gray areas, Kim, so thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I, but I think it might be helpful. And so maybe part of this discussion will help clarify, um, help clarify that through this application process.
It would be a good scenario.
Yeah.
And also keep in mind, um, for you folks, you probably will never see one of these for a very long time.
Yeah.
Um. The reason it's before us, we really.
It's interesting. We're seeing it now.
We, this is normally signed off in the office ever since I've been a member of the commission.
Hmm.
Why, why wasn't it signed off, Jim?
I don't know. It, Mr. Cody came to me last February. Asked if the commission would look at the, take this application up. And I said, sure, because that's our job. But we've never done it because it's called a sign off on right of use. And if everything is in line, we don't bother the commission with it. Um. That changed probably twenty-five, thirty years ago. The commission used to see every one of these. And the meeting started at seven-thirty and went to eleven o'clock. And they made changes. So the Z E O and could sign off on this downstairs in the office.
Mm-hmm.
And this is the first one as far as right of use, not special permit. Not special permit, just right of use, what our book says a person can do. Um, normally this is handled elsewhere. Um. But we can handle it. We can do it.
Do we, this is Kim. Do we, um, vote to, uh, extend it or how how does that work? Do we just state that we're going to open?
Um.
I don't know that.
Yeah, I don't know if we have to vote to extend it, um.
I believe it's a table, is it not?
Basically table. I mean, it's in our, it's in our laps and we've got it for sixty-five days.
Okay.
And but if inactivity sometimes uh, allows it to go forward. Any inactivity means it's approved. Um.
So if we got, we agree to put it on the agenda, we table it and put it on.
Yes.
Excuse me, you can't table it because you've already discussed it.
Oh, really?
Oh, yes. Yes, you can't table it. Table is a motion to move it to another meeting with no discussion. So you can, um, decide to continue it to the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
All right.
Thank you.
Do we have to make a motion to do that, Julie?
You don't have to. Some commissions do, but it's not required.
Okay.
But aren't we tabling this until we talk to you?
Yep. We're continuing.
You're continuing.
Continuing.
Can't use this, this, Kim, you can't use the phrase or the term table, so we're continuing.
Until we talk.
I will make a motion, this Elaine Curly, I will make a motion to continue it until the meeting, um, of October. Um, sorry.
Twelve?
I guess the twelfth.
October twelve.
To October twelfth.
Uh, this is Kim Castor, and I second that.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, next item. Oh. Discussion following public hearing on proposed amendments to the Roxbury zoning regulations pertaining to nonconformities.
I already forgot about that.
I'm, I'm just so confused.
Hmm.
So what, what's everybody?
This is Bill. If if the numbers weren't a little mixed up on that, uh, nonconformity issue, could we have voted on that tonight?
You can still, this is Kim. You can still vote on it even with the numbers because that's a minor revision. And, um, so I, I checked with her on that prior. This is a couple of things, so.
What was that last thing, Kim? That last thing that you said you had to check with her on, what was that pertaining to?
No, no, um, I, during my conversation with Gail, we talked about minor revisions and that we could vote on this if we wanted to tonight and make those minor revisions as part of the, um, the motion.
Let me throw one thing out there in some of my conversations with Gail. Anytime we vote on, uh, an amendment like this as a commission or a regulation, we have to give reasons. And in the past, we've pretty much given five different reasons. Gail said it should be one reason that we all agree upon. Yeah.
That would be tough.
Um, basically, um, within the motion to approve, within that motion, I would ask for the reason. You know, Kim and I, Kim spoke about it and, uh, referring to the fact that the regulation three point ten needed a complete makeover. That's part of the reason. Uh, second part of the reason to allow people to expand and do something with their nonconforming barns to salvage them. And basically, stop there. That needed a rewrite to bring it up to date. And we're allowing people to hopefully salvage their agricultural barn.
This is Kim. Um, I would just also make mention of, you know, in terms of updating it, that we're updating it to Connecticut state statutes.
Sure. I can't make a motion, so you guys entertain, I would ask for a motion.
So I'd like to clarify, Kim doesn't have any questions. There was, there was just one aspect at the end that you said that you were uncertain about. So I just want to clarify that you're okay with it.
There was?
Yep.
I don't remember what that was.
Uh, candy red. Uh, let me see if I can pull it up. Candy red.
Oh, yes, you know what?
Four point, three point five, was it, or?
Yep.
I think that was it.
Yeah. Correct. So, um, this is my suggestion.
Mm-hmm.
Because I like things nice and neat and tidy.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. And I agree because of that. I am uncertain about what numbers are supposed to be there. If it's four point three and four point five, I'm not certain. I would prefer that if we continue this discussion, I make these changes so that, and I understand from Gail what specifically these are, so that we have a complete document that is, is done. I I'd feel better about that personally. And does not have to, wouldn't that have to go back to public hearing? It was just um, but so how does that, how does that work? Julie?
I'm sorry, I had to open my mic. Um, no, you can, you don't have to vote on this tonight. You can continue this to the next meeting also.
Right.
Okay.
So I would like to make a motion to continue. Can we do that, Julie?
Yes, you can.
I'd like to make a motion to continue, um, the, uh, topic of nonconformity three point ten until the meeting of October twelfth.
Candy Valery, I second.
All in favor? And we're doing this to talk to Gail and get the numbers straightened out, correct?
Yes, I think that's important, especially that one. Yes, I think that's important, especially that one.
It's that one, yeah, the rest is fine. The rest is great.
Yeah, the other numbers that needed updating were minimal. It was just pieful.
Yep.
And Julie, did, is John with us? Did any Z E O report?
He was here earlier. Let me, he still is on.
Yeah, hey, it's John Cody. I've been here for the entire show. Uh Z E O report. All right. Thank God it's been a little slow the last two weeks. Um just some pool permits, generator, stuff like that. I did have some complaints, uh fence complaints, stuff like that, generators. They've all been resolved, so that's been going. Great reprieve you guys here we had down there. Um but if anyone has any questions on like uh site visit section set seven there or the Dennis McDonald application, please feel free to give me a buzz in the office. I'm privy to pretty much all the information on both of those. And um that pretty much sums it up.
Very good.
Hi, John.
Hey there, how are you?
Good.
It's hard to keep my mouth shut back here, but you gotta do what you gotta do.
You did a really good job.
Oh, he's more than you can imagine.
Chairman's report, I have nothing. Communications from the cog. There's another fifth Thursday form coming up. Elaine, you got that info?
I did, thank you.
I won't be able to.
We have an event. We won't be able to be present for the hard meeting.
Right. And that is the end of the agenda unless somebody else has some other concerns they'd like to bring up and discuss.
Can we do that in the special meeting?
No, you can't.
Well, no.
Okay.
Can't really add, uh, we can't add to the agenda. So I believe we have to adjourn so we don't all end up, you know.
In jail.
Yeah.
Okay.
So entertain a motion for adjournment.
This is Elaine. I moved to adjourn the meeting of September twentieth.
Second? Anybody?
Yeah, this is Candy Valeri. I second that motion.
Now, any of the uh all, when we continue these discussions, you folks are the ones that are gonna continue it. I can't reseat anybody. Um so if you're not there, if I have to reseat somebody, they have to listen to the tape and the minutes and all that. And we're continuing to, two things. And I can't put an alternate in in October unless they definitely listen to all the recordings. Okay, so uh all in favor of adjournment? It's been moved and seconded.
Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Julie.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you to um Kim for bringing this forth. This was an amazing, amazing act getting this three all put together.
I learned a lot. I I really learned a lot. So, thank you.
I can imagine how difficult writing it, cuz reading it took like five, six times, so.
Oh, yeah. Going back and forth between the old and new. It it it's an amazing job you did, really.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, I I think it'll make it make positive changes for the town as well. You know, especially on the clarification that Ann Coffin had, which was, you know, you could, you could utilize the nonconforming area as storage and still get active um useful space out of the conforming section.
Yes, right, exactly.
That's a very good point to uh talk about.
Right, so, okay. Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night.
Yeah, have a good night.
Good night.
Good night, Mr. Bill.
Bye.